Nobody likes it, but to give neighborhoods basically the power to engineer streets, I think, is not something I would be in favor of. I mean, we have enough trouble, you know, collecting, you know, homes association dues for trash pickup and, you know, keeping people or making sure people have their houses painted in their allowance mode. So, I just think it would create a lot of tension in neighborhoods and could, you know, could affect property values as well. I mean, if you're on a, in a neighborhood where you're at the end and, you know, the, you're next to a corner where everybody else can freely use that one side, you might have to park, I mean, your friends over there have to park half a block down the street. Doesn't seem like a valid reason.
I think that we need to look at a couple of different issues, and I think one of them may be that this doesn't have any effect after 6:00 PM or something. You could do it during the daytime or something to that effect, or only at night and not during the daytime, depending on when the parking is an issue. But it is a safety issue if you've got a car pulling out of a residential thoroughfare and arterial car wants to turn onto that street. Now you have somebody on an artery that can't make that turn because there's a car coming out of that residential street and there's no place for that car to go. So that's backed up arterial traffic and created, and that's really part of what the genesis of this is, has been some concerns about the safety of people trying to turn onto that residential street.
But there's, there's laws already in place that I think require, is it 150 feet? You can't park within, or 100 feet of a, of a intersection or something like that?
I believe it's 50 feet. I'd have to confirm, but I think, I think it's 50 feet.
So could, could people change it back? In other words, if 60%, let's say the two or three homeowners that, that were impacted said, you know, "We're going to change this policy," and then they move, can people go back and say, "We want to change back to parking on both sides"? Why not? I mean, you see how HOA politics is going to be involved and create a, I think, a lot of tension in neighborhoods. Does anybody else see it that way?
HOA politics always have the ability for tensions. So, that's anything new to them.
Yeah, but I mean...
But it also gives them the power to...
It gives them an option, that's exactly right. They have at least some, some power to do something about it, even if it doesn't fly. They've had an opportunity to participate in the process.
But the reversal process is the last question. I mean, can we write in, it has to fall to the same thing to, I mean, obviously, if it's an isolated incident, that's why we don't have to put a ton of time, a ton of money into it. If it's two meetings, it's not a lot of time to, to give the citizens the ability to go down this road if they need to. If they decide they want to, they...
Well, and I kind of, I kind of wonder whether or not it's, I mean, if you've got enough motivated citizens and they would like to see a change on, on their, on their particular street, you know, I mean, if it's a two-thirds majority, I'm not sure. And it doesn't sound like this is going to take a tremendous amount of staff time.
No, and I think, you know, I think...
And it's administrative in nature.
Pretty much.
You know, I think that the question about, well, do they want to switch it to the other side? I think once, if it's judged to be needed and it's on one side, I don't think staff is going to be terribly motivated to listen to a change to the other side. If you felt, if you, the community felt that this was needed, then I think we would probably say, "We're done." You know, if you put it on this side, because why change it to the other side? Then it becomes HOA politics.
Well, I mean, what if they want to go back to parking on both sides?
I think, I think, once it's, it's posted, I think it would probably be best to leave it there for at least...
Why, though? I mean...
I don't know why.
David, I wonder...
I mean, it's all about, you know, letting the neighborhood decide, and they should be able to decide the other way, you know?
Oh, I, I, you don't want to overpolicy, but it does, maybe it has to go into effect for a service of five years.
I think the engineers that design the streets and, you know, and the police that patrol the streets can determine when a street is, is so bad that it needs, you know, to be limited to one side. Isn't that, every city except the overall park does it that way, right?
I could agree with that.
Isn't that how we do it? We don't, do we have many one-sided parking?
No, we don't.
It's easy for us now. We just say, "No, it's, parking's allowed by the signs."
We vote on it Monday?
Probably, I think, probably realistically, I think probably the first meeting in April.
Okay. Well, we're videotaping meetings for reasons, so maybe residential watch systems voice their opinion.
There will be a watch system, so we're not taking it, right?
There will be.
We're taking them all.
No, I didn't think we did that.
We do them all, every meeting.
Great.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, and then our final presentation this evening is from the BPU exploratory committee. Now, Christie, Christie, the manager, who's presenting this evening?
This is Lee Moore, is going to be presenting for us this evening. We've got a presentation, and actually, we'll hand out copies of the presentation after he's completed. You can follow along on your monitors. Lance, did you have a copy of the PowerPoint on Jim Drive? Redundancy in case of failure.
Presenters are required to provide humorous anecdotes during the, during the dead air.
Okay. I'm not prepared for that.
Good slide number one.
I can go ahead and introduce myself while I'm standing here. My name's Lee Moore, and I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the BPU exploratory committee, and I'm here on behalf of myself as a citizen of Gardner. I reside at 521 East Dogwood Street, and have lived in Gardner since 2004. I know each of you have received copies of the committee's white paper, so I'm confident you all have some familiarity with the subject at hand. However, for tonight's presentation, I'm going to respectfully ask that you refrain from asking questions until the presentation is complete. Our charter, as we understand it, began last October 17th, when city council authorized the formation of the BPU exploratory committee. We were tasked with researching and providing a recommendation to city council regarding the possible consolidation of all three city-owned utilities under one governing board or commission. Since October, our committee, composed of community volunteers, has spent no small measure of time researching this subject. Members of the committee include myself, manager of Aviation Technical Publications for Garmin, Jim Ross, a telecommunications consultant, Mike O'Connor, local business owner and realtor, Tom Mertz, owner of TradeNet Publishing, Norm Schut, retired certified public accountant and auditor for Kansas University Medical Center, Don Cooper, a retired credit union executive, Mark Baldwin, electric utility board member and software engineer for Garmin, Lance Boyd, electric utility board chairman and managing director at Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, Christie Harrison, council president and manager of engineering services at CenturyLink, and Chris Morrow, council member and employment professional. What I'll be presenting to you tonight for discussion is our committee's recommendation, what we discovered to support that recommendation, why we believe in a board structure, disadvantages of the current water and wastewater governance structure, an outsider's perspective of best practices, and the demands of modern utility governance, and a final summary and conclusion. What we are recommending tonight is that an independent board of utility governance be established by city council, to take advantage of a more focused, consistent, and in-depth understanding of utility operations, and to provide more effective strategic management of Gardner's multimillion-dollar investment in utility infrastructure. We found a multitude of reasons to support a change in governance, and I'll highlight some of those tonight, beginning with rate subsidies. We found that the cities fostered some rate subsidies between water and wastewater. It has also had a generous discount rate for large consumption users as compared to other cities. Subsidies unfortunately distort the actual cost of providing utility services, which makes it difficult to make fair comparisons with neighboring utilities. We also found issue with rate development and the use of proceeds. Rate development requires constant attention. Small rate increases have not always been levied to support sufficient reserves, even when supported by sporadically performed rate studies. It was also apparent that collected utility revenues were used for the city's general fund spending and other non-utility projects. These decisions have resulted in the current backlog of needed system and line maintenance, the cost of which could exceed $32 million. This is because deferred cost of repairs increase when timely maintenance is not performed. For example, the downtown standpipe. This is a facility that requires ongoing maintenance, and in fact, painting in with epoxy is recommended every 15 to 20 years. In over 60 years, ours was painted once, causing premature deterioration resulting in 20 years of lost service life and an additional $582,000 of unnecessary repair costs. Lastly, we found that the water and wastewater management has not been responsibly empowered. The current structure places responsibility on city council, which may not have the in-depth knowledge regarding municipal utilities. The current decision-making process delays reaction time and problem resolution, and it results in increased cost. Gardner Water and Wastewater Utility Management has less latitude in approving expenditures compared to other local utilities, for example, Gardner Energy and Rural Water VII. So why a board structure? Well, we didn't have to look any further than our own electric utility to find a successful example of a, of a utility board from which to construct a case study. In fact, beginning in 2008, city council entered into a keeper cell deliberation regarding the electric utility, in which they were provided financial data and other information regarding the electric utility, including the system valuation, the offer price for the utility, the cost of providing services to the community compared to other area suppliers, and the value of the services and benefits provided to the community. After reviewing all of the information available, in the fall of 2008, city council voted unanimously to keep the utility and form an electric utility board. Gardner Energy and the Electric Utility Board became operational in the first quarter of 2009. The marching orders received by Mayor Lehman and the council at that time was simply run it like a business. Prior to the keeper cell deliberation, the electric utility was spending more than it was earning. Utility reserve funds were an estimated $1.4 million at the beginning of the fiscal year in January of 2008. The utility experienced a shortfall in its budget of $800,000 in fiscal, fiscal year 2008, resulting in a reserve fund balance of just $650,000 in January of 2009. With a shortfall projected again in 2009, the reserve fund balance projected for 2010 was only $332,000. This put our electric utility and the city in a less-than-optimal position to handle any type of significant emergency or equipment failure. This is an example of the shortsightedness of the city council form of utility governance. So what did the board do when they started running Gardner Energy like a business? Well, beginning in 2009, the Electric Utility Board immediately hired a director. They reviewed operating practices and financial policies. They developed a purchasing policy. They purchased specialty equipment to minimize the need to hire contractors. They also approved a specialty vehicle lease program, and they re-implemented the power cost adjustment, and, and much more. So what was the impact of all this running it like a business? Well, board influence and determination resulted in a significant impact in Gardner Energy. The Electric Utility Board implemented a reserve policy that resulted in the increase of available reserves to more than $5 million, and rates have been stable. And here's an example of how running Gardner Energy like a business has affected the utility's bottom line, and you can see the total operating revenue line, the second one from the top, shows how in 2008, we're bringing in 11 million, 11.7 million. That increased slightly in 2009 to 14 million, but then it's been steady since. The revenues are, are basically the rates that we, as customers, pay, among other things. And then, looking at the surplus and shortfall line, you can see the $804,000 budget deficit in 2008, and how by 2009, it increased to 1.3 million, and then it stabilized into, by 2011, to 1.1 million. And then, the funds available, which are the reserves that I was, I was mentioning before, these are the funds available on, on, at the end of the year, fiscal year 2008 was at one, just under 1.1 million, and by 2011, we're at 5.1 million. This slide shows what I just spoke about graphically, and you can see the stability and, and the top three lines, and the growth in the bottom three lines. The council-run utility governance model has some distinct and inherent disadvantages, most notable of which is related to the fact that effective utility governance requires specialized business oversight. Council has limited time to learn utility industry issues, trends, and strategies. Council members must deal with all city governance issues, as well as constituents' issues. Finally, council has not historically provided the time necessary to focus on the specialized needs of our utilities with their increasing costs and their financial risks. We also looked from an outsider's perspective regarding the best practices, which led us to consider Sarbanes-Oxley Act of 2002, which addresses issues of utility industry best practices. Once enacted, Congress began requiring increased accountability from boards by requiring qualified, knowledgeable members who are held accountable for policy decisions. Although the act does not apply legally or specifically to municipalities, it has become standard in the eyes of bond rating agencies and the courts when defining an industry best practice. We also chose to investigate the perspective of a respected credit rating agency. In our case, we looked to Moody's. As it turns out, Moody's routinely reviews the record and actions of utility governing boards to develop bond ratings, and as it turns out, they favor strong independent boards with industry expertise as sound governance structure. They also favor utility governing boards that minimize political interference in the management of utility operations. In addition, they look for the establishment of sound rate policies and risk management programs, strategic plans, and fund transfer policies, the adaptability to continued changes in the, in the utility industry and the market environment. These are all essential for important, sound financial performance and favorable credit rating factors. All of this study gave us an understanding of the demands of modern utility governance, and the committee came to believe very strongly that continuity of non-political leadership is important to the success of Gardner's electric, water, and wastewater utilities. Because project planning may take several years to bring different projects to fruition, for example, the Kill Creek wastewater treatment plant. It was conceived five years prior to construction start, and it took two years to complete it, and future expansions will extend planning for nearly 50 years. So to sum this up, Gardner's current governance for its utility lacks time needed to focus on utilities, resulting in rate subsidies that hide the true cost of service and impede true comparability, rate studies that are sporadic, providing results that are not instituted, revenues which are used for non-utility purposes, a significant backlog of scheduled maintenance, additional costs incurred from delayed projects, utility management, which is not empowered, and decisions that may be politically motivated and not based on sound business rationale. Therefore, implementing a BPU will allow city council to devote more time to other city business, and in fact, most municipalities in Johnson County do not have the added burden of running a public utility. When a BPU is formed and operational, it will be tasked with providing focused oversight and planning with respect to our city-owned utilities, and it will do so exclusively. In conclusion, the BPU exploratory committee recommends that governance and oversight of Gardner's water and wastewater utilities be placed under an independent board of, of public utilities that is appointed by and reports to the governing body of Gardner. Thank you very much for your attention. And at this point, I'll be glad to answer questions, however, for more detailed questions, I may ask for help from Bill Krajec or Jim Melvin, or maybe one of the other committee members in attendance.
I do believe we have some other committee members here that are going to hand out what we just saw on the PowerPoint there, so that we can easily flip back and forth without having to go back and forth with the PowerPoint.
Lee, I had a question. On the slide, you talked about transfers as a general fund.
Yes.
Can you give examples of what those were, when they were, and how much? I mean, currently, we transfer to the general fund because a portion of human resources, a portion of finance, obviously, utilities, utility billing.
Right.
You know, so what's the, what's the piece that goes in?
Well, I don't think we have any specific numbers. I think some of this was, was information garnered from, from data we pulled off of the spreadsheets, but I don't think we listed anything in the, in the white paper.
No, that was the one thing, it just, it was just spoken in generality that...
Right.
There were transfers in the general fund that caused, I mean, essentially, there was a cause and effect to the...
And I, I think that just speaks more to the, the structure that's, that's in place currently, that there is no, at least, nothing that we could find, anything that was discreet, or this is, you know, this is where the money comes in and this is where the money goes for the utilities specifically. So, I think that was a generalization.
Okay. But I guess where I got confused was that, I mean, granted, in '93, '94, it was fairly commodus, but since that time, there's been a lot of effort to segregate all the funds, not just utility versus general, but specific to the given utility. So that, that point, I'd be a little bit aware of that, where that was and what the overall impact was.
Yeah, and that's, that's something that we could probably dig back into the numbers and, and give you some ideas of where that happened. I think that there were, that this speaks to the fact that there's, aside from Kansas statute, which dictates transfers between funds, there's probably some policies that we as a city should have instituted at some point to differentiate.
What, what happened in 2008 that caused $800,000 worth of underfunding or...
That is going to be a question for Jim or Bill.
Larry, are you specifically talking about the electric fund?
Right.
Yeah, we spent more than we took in.
But what, what did we do as far as, I mean, what were energy prices like then? Wasn't that a pretty volatile age?
The, the, not so much energy, but gas, natural gas was pretty volatile back in that time. In 2005, I believe is the date, and don't hold me exactly to that, the city actually had the, the power cost adjustment in place and operating up to a point, and I think that was about 2005 or 2006, and they quit collecting the PCA at that point in time. And I believe that was a decision made by the city administrator. I don't think the council had an opportunity to, to vote on that. And with that move, obviously, when you remove the PCA, the, the funding available was reduced because of that, and it continued to go down, resulting in, in a deficit. And, and that's strictly the difference between revenues taken in and expenses.
But if the council had known that the city administrator had decided to remove that, they certainly would have said, "Oh, wait a second, that may not work," or "What would happen if we did do that," right?
The decision to switch from the PCA to a, to a rate-based adjustment every year was made as part of the budget process. I mean, I, you're right, I don't know that there was a specific action that said, "Here too fore we shall," but that was the, the discussion that occurred back then, and it may have been 2005, it may have been earlier, but I, I don't recall specifically, but that was the, the basis was that it was just, you know, strictly, strictly a rate adjustment to go to that, to that plan, quite wrong or indifferent. So, I mean, there was a, there was council involvement in the decision, although there may not have been a specific, one specific action.
Yeah, vote taken by the council.
That we were going to do this.
Yes.
It was part of the budget process. And one of the things I recall, and Laura, I don't know if you can shed light, we, when we were talking about the keeper cell, there was a lot of holding back on projects, on doing things, on making, you know, decisions about funding and so on, until we got to that point and make a decision. And that was right at that time, so I know there was a lot of discussion going on.
That's correct, yeah. There was, there's a lot of, during the keeper cell process, there were kind of only, only absolute necessities were being taken care of, because until that was resolved, we weren't sure what we were going to get.
Since the, since Gardner Energy was formed and the Electric Utility Board took over, Dave just mentioned that there were things that we weren't doing and projects we weren't undertaking, or maybe it was the mayor, I don't remember. But we're doing projects now, we're making improvements. We're undertaking new initiatives that probably bear a cost, but aren't necessarily impacting the bottom line in a red inkway. Is that correct?
No, that's absolutely correct, Chris. We, we've, since, since 2008, we've had a surplus each year. We, we've not had need to raise rates for our customers. We've, we've rebuilt and maintained, I couldn't tell you how many, how many miles of line in the city. We've constructed several new feeders, well, we extended across, whether you call it east or south of the interstate, at Cedar Niles, and we're in the process of finishing a project that runs along Old 56 Highway to improve reliability to Coleman, and then it extends east across the 167th Street right-of-way, and probably within the month, we'll be crossing the interstate with a second feeder, so we can loop those for reliability. So we're setting on the, on the, whatever direction that is, the other side of the interstate, ready to serve new development when it gets there.
So if you had to, to say there were three, top three things that had... So if you had to say there were three, top three things that have allowed Gardner Energy to go from where they were in two thousand and eight to where they are now, what would those three things, what would you identify those as?
I would think, Christie, one is we were empowered to make decisions and run, and run the utility like a business. That, that was extremely important. Along with that, we, the board revised the purchasing policies and, and made it possible for us to make decisions in a timely manner regarding purchases and, and things that we need to manage, to manage the utility. I don't know whether you call that one or two, but, you know, we've, we've been able to, because of the board, purchase necessary equipment. We've essentially eliminated the use of contractors. We don't use contractors anymore. When I mentioned the Cedar Niles crossing Interstate Thirty-Five, we had never done that before as a utility. We didn't have the equipment to do it. We had the expertise, but not the equipment. That one piece of equipment, which as I recall was, let's just say, fifty thousand dollars, allowed us to cross the interstate and avoid at least spending that much with a contractor to do the same thing. And we're going to use that same piece of equipment when we cross again in the near future at Clare Road. It's those kind of things that, that has allowed Gardner Energy to be successful.
So when you say, run it like a business, you know, as kind of your top one, you've done that without raising rates. So what, what does that mean? I mean, what, what have you done that, that has allowed you to get there without having to increase rates to the customers? What, I mean, obviously, you had to either cut costs or there, there was something that's been done to?
Well, we did cut costs. We, we were spending probably, and Dave could probably help me with that, but probably a quarter to half a million dollars a year on contracting. During the development years, you know, when the city was really growing, we were using contractors like Par and Capital to do the very large projects because we, we weren't equipped to do that, those kind of projects.
Okay, one last question. That brings up, so, so in those years when we experienced a lot of growth and you were using contractors, we've seen that subside since two thousand nine, two thousand ten. If that were to happen again, let's say next year at this time, we're seeing that same type of boom, would you be able to handle the load with your existing resource or would we have to revert back to utilizing contractors in some cases?
I truly believe we'd be able to handle it with our existing resources.
Okay.
And the equipment that we have now that we did not have at that time.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a question?
Go ahead, Larry.
So the, the city's owned the electric utilities since what year?
Probably early nineteen hundreds.
Okay. And how many of those years were it wasn't, you know, mismanaged to the point where we either had to raise rates dramatically or face, you know, government intervention or outage or something?
Yeah, basically, it was run, what you, what you see is just, I think the big change for the city was when it went from an all requirements, which means we did not have generation assets, to getting generation assets. As your question, when was it mismanaged? I don't believe it was ever mismanaged. I think it was well-run, always, you have to look, when I first got here, I thought, my gosh, a city electric utility, that's really different because I'm used to generally larger service areas. But when you figure the small, air, small cities would develop outside, if they wanted power, they had to develop themselves. They ran it, ran it well with the resources they had. It was a fairly small load. When we had the large growth, the staff, which was very limited at that time, spent a lot of time installing for new customers. But, you know, they maintained and did a good job.
But really, the only years that we saw in the presentation that were years that it was improperly managed, according to your, your presentation, was two thousand and eight, maybe two thousand and nine, but we can also, is that right?
I would say probably the big difference was the production cost adjustment. And Bill, Bill's been in the business longer than I've ever dreamed of being. I think I've had five years involved with electric and Bill's whole career is electric. But the, because the production cost is such a volatile thing, you have to have the ability to surcharge or adjust based on the fluctuating power costs. When the city stopped collecting it, then that lost that flexibility. I think when the EUB formed, they went back to collecting the production cost, which basically restored that. And, and part of the reason too is once again, back to when the keeper cell process was going, there was a lot of pressure from all sides. Why is Gardner cost different than KCPL, KPL? And there was a lot of attempts to try and achieve parity. And the production cost adjustment was part of that, part of what was eliminated at the time, or quit collecting, it was always on the books.
One of the, you touched on it a little bit, one of the kind of watershed moments in the utilities history was the, the loss of capacity. You know, we were paid for that capacity for a long, long time and as we grew and our capacity went away, we lost our cheap power. I mean, essentially, that's what we had for years, from the standpoint of purchase, it was cheap power. And then, I can't remember what year it was, when Hawthorne caught fire and we were required to produce for a good portion of that season, I can't remember what year that was, but that
Late eighty, late eighty.
Because we were producing, our costs for that period of time jumped significantly. So, you know, our revenues faded and then our, our costs adjusted and, you know, your point on the, on the production cost, our cost and the PCA, I mean, I mean, that's a variable, it's a variable component. So that's going to rise and fall based on, based on our costs. So month to month, or is it three months? I can't remember the
It's a twelve-month average, Dave.
It's twelve-month average, but the
But it's monthly.
The PCA adjustment.
Yeah, we, we recalculate it monthly, but it's based on the previous twelve months.
Twelve months, running average, okay. So, you know, that's a, you know, whatever one percent adjustment to your bill that covers that cost of power.
Yeah, well, first of all, the mayor's right. The city had a sweet deal with KCPL for many years and then the city began to grow. And that, those generators that are still there that we use during the summer for peaking were no longer a benefit to KCPL and the contract ran out and they didn't renew it and left us on our own. We, we actually have, we have long-term contracts. We have a, a long-term contract with the Grand River Dam Authority and that extends to, don't hold me to the exact year, but I think it's like twenty twenty-six, something like that. We, we have a long-term contract in place with Omaha Public Power. We just renewed that and Larry, you asked about that over, well, late last week. Right now, that expires in two thousand and eighteen. We also, through KMEA and our EMP One group, we have a load following agreement. The contracts that we have with OPPD, GRDA, we have fixed price. But I think the GRDA contract is for nine megawatts. We get right now from, from OPPD, ten megawatts in the summer, so that's nineteen. And our peak in the summer, the hottest part of the day, is like thirty-eight megawatts. So we have to make up that difference. Remember, you don't need that thirty-eight all day, you just need it for that peak period. So
But you only run the generate, I mean, for peak power, you use the generators that we have, the thirty, the thirty-two fifteen megawatt generators?
They're two, they're rated fifteen megawatts each, yes.
Okay, so that's the peak power that we use during the summer? You only use that for, I think, a hundred hours?
No, no, we actually, through, through EMP One, if, if, we know what it costs to generate with our peaking turbines, if, if EMP One and KMEA can purchase power on the grid or through our low-falling agreement with KCPL for less money than we can generate it, we buy it.
Right.
So typically, we run, right now, we're running somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty hours every summer, which is, which is not a lot compared to when KCPL operated in the units.
Seven days, basically.
Yeah, that's over the whole summer.
And what do those generators cost to maintain to have that seven-day cycle?
Well, well, we've got, I've never, I can tell you what, what it costs to generate power. I think the last calculation was something about eighty-five dollars a megawatt, okay? And we're buying it, our average long-term agreement around that, we buy it for like fifty, fifty-five dollars a megawatt. So, so if we can buy it between fifty and fifty-five and eighty-five in the summer, we buy it. But in the meantime, to answer your question, we've not spent a lot of money over time. It's kind of like the explanation on the water wastewater system. If you continue to maintain it and keep it in good running order, you're okay. We've got some problems this year, we're going to spend, we've got a project going right now, we're going to spend some money on a, on a huge gearbox on unit number two. We, we think we've got a bearing issue and in fact, we're taking it apart right now.
And how much does something like that cost?
Yeah, that's probably going to cost us this year about a hundred thousand dollars to, to repair that gearbox. That's the largest expenditure that we've had on those units since I've been here. And I've been here since like, I don't know, mid oh-eight, I think, when I first came over.
We did, either the early two thousands or somewhere thereabouts, we, we did spend quite a bit of money on
On both units.
On both units from the, just the
We, in two thousand and two and two thousand and three, we overhauled both units. I think we dropped approximately five million on both of those. But once again, I think one thing about those units is what do they cost? It's basically, one thing they do is what do they help you avoid, I think, in cost?
Well, it provides capacity. We, we have to have a hundred and twelve percent of our peak summer load and this summer, it was like thirty-eight megawatts. So if you, so if you multiply that times a hundred and twelve, that's what we've got to have available in capacity this summer. And as the load on the system grows, the peak grows, that capacity requirement is going to grow. And we use those two, those two turbines as capacity.
I was at a Electric Utility Board meeting last year sometime and saw photos. The turbines were recently taken apart and some maintenance performed, is that correct?
We, we've performed some maintenance that, that had not been done in, well, many years. The, the units are vintage-like. We, we installed around nineteen ninety, I think, so they're
Like sixty-eight, I mean, I think the manufacturer
Yes.
Was like nineteen sixty-eight, that's somewhere thereabouts, that time.
They're, they're pre-owned and only operated on Sunday and they, they were about, you know, on the way to service. We were, they were about twenty years old when the city purchased them from a utility in Florida and they were dismantled and brought up here and, and put back together again. And they've been functioning very well for us for twenty years.
Would you, and maybe Dave could speak about this too, but the, the maintenance that, that you all did on those turbines, I mean, is that something that would have been handled in-house previously? Because I, I know you and your staff handled that.
Well, yeah, I, I dropped the ball on your question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We, we removed the, the heat exchangers
Yeah.
Last, last year and cleaned those up to improve the efficiency, improve the, the heat, the heat rate on the unit. And that's something that, based on my, my staff said that we've never done in twenty years was remove those units. And typically in the past, we would have, we would have hired a contractor to come in and remove those. But staff, staff felt strongly that they wanted to take it on, the project on themselves and they, and they did an outstanding job.
Chris, to kind of, as you guys were going through all the steps involved and, and doing all the backside research, when you start to consider in the water and the wastewater parts of it, do you have a good feeling that there's an opportunity to make some of these immediate efficiency improvements and, and capitalize on some of that, see the returns like we've seen with the electric board as the impact was, you know, especially when you consider how slow government can move at times, it happened really quick and the results were really quick. Is there the same opportunity there?
I don't think that it's, it's something that we can expect to have the same level of success in the, in the same period of time. I think that it's, it's the type of thing where
You can't promise five million dollars?
We can't promise five million dollars in, in less than four years. But I definitely think that it's, we've got expertise in-house that can, that can deal with some of the, the issues and if it's being run like a, a business, instead of, instead of waiting for, you know, presentations before city council and, and votes and trying to get all of us up here to understand, number one, the importance, the expedited fashion that it might need to be made in and, and things like that. We're not going to have the kind of knowledge built up over time that a public utility board is going to amass over a reasonably short period of time. I mean, I, we did have a couple of members of the utility board that were on the committee. Now Lance Boyd's the chairman and he works in the energy industry and so he's, he's pretty up to speed already, but he just resumed, he, he just took over the, the chairmanship from Randy Tedford, whose background's in finance. The important part is, is the, is the study in the, in the business mindset. I, I would think, Bill, does that make sense?
Can we let Jim maybe?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Can maybe help with that a little bit. The, the cause of the issues that we have in the water and wastewater are significantly different than what they were for the, the electric board. Essentially, from what Bill has presented, by instituting the PCA, they were able to recover. We're not going to be able to do that on the, on the water and wastewater side because we are raising rates to get to where we need to be, but we haven't quite reached a point where our income and our expenditures for debt service and for operations are equal. And we need to get to a point where there's slightly more coming in than there is going out. That should take place in a few years and I, you know, made the presentation to the council, unfortunately, I had to run through it a little quickly, but the, the bottom line of that is that we have a significant amount of debt now and it was caused by some things that, that didn't take place back in the nineties and, and we essentially replaced every major facility that we own from two thousand and two to about two thousand and nine. And when you do that, you're going to be in significant amount of debt. Well, we are. And we did a couple of other things as far as our income was concerned. We were relying on the development funds to pay that, that debt service, which is, you know, certainly a logical thing to think about when you've got that money coming in, but it stopped in two thousand and seven. And so we've been trying to get back to a point where the fees coming in would pay for that and we're just about to get there. That's, that's not a point where you really want to be to have to raise rates that quickly, but unfortunately, that's what we had to do.
Now, impact fees, I mean, that's, when those are collected, and, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, that's, that's supposed to be put into fund and then used for future development?
That's correct. I mean, you, you can use it for any number of things as far as debt service, but the, the intention on the development fees generally is to, to pay for expansions that you need to do in order to, to meet development because they're paying a development fee for that purpose.
I think that was the way that I understood it. One of the other things that, that, I mean, we had a long stretch where we didn't, where the water and the wastewater didn't raise rates at all.
From nineteen ninety-eight till two thousand and seven, you know, two thousand and seven went down a little bit and then back up in two thousand and eight. And then two thousand and nine, we actually did start raising them because it, development fees fell off at the end of two thousand and seven.
So I was just, during that time, do you remember, and Dave, maybe you remember, was it recommended that rates be raised or was that not even brought forth during budgeting?
There, there was a rate study that was done in two thousand and two that did recommend that we do raise rates. There was a rate study that was done in 2002 that did recommend that we do raise rates. But a council decision was made on that based on the fact that we have all these monies coming in, that we would use those to hold the rates down.
It's not entirely accurate. The rate study looked at water wastewater, also looked at electric. And the understanding what the recommendations were, they weren't, we were not capable of raising the rates to the level that was recommended. So there was focus on electric because electric had been, electric had been utilized for a long time, up until, you know, we started making changes to prop up, gentrify. And, you know, in the pre-'90s, into the mid-'90s, that was the use of the electric utilities. There wasn't a lot of investment going into the turbines and that sort of thing, which got us to the cost of the work there. So in order to avoid the shock of big electric or big water, big wastewater, the decision was to manage it accordingly. I can't remember what the number was exactly, but I think there was a recommendation of 20% increase in electric rates. And I don't know, Laura, if you remember that far we have looked at C, but it was significant. So the idea was to balance those impacts to the consumer since we had all three consumers in that area and, you know, try to be able to hold it down. So that was the, you know, the overall cost. And if you, you know, if you look at the history of the councils over time, you know, the pressure on staff has always been, don't raise anything. And that's been, regardless of the council, regardless of makeup of the council, that's been the mantra. And so that's, you know, that's how we got to where we were. And then, of course, the drop-off of development. Development fees were structured in a way to not have new development pay 100% of the development cost, but to balance it between what's needed for new development and then what's needed for improvement. I mean, there was no science behind it, but there was an assumption that existing consumers realize some benefit from those improvements in the form of regulatory changes. Water clarity certainly was a big issue, the water taste. So, you know, it was never 100% to be allocated to development. But that's what it was.
But getting back to the entire premise of why, Chris, you promoted this concept of having a BPU. And that is that in the case of the electric utility, the one year, if you just look at one year, there was, you know, something happened to create, you know, an economic uncertainty. And I pulled up a chart on energy prices and, you know, natural gas prices for that one year from 2005 to 2006 went up 300%. And then again, in 2008, they did, it went from about $7 per, I think they measured in 1,000 cubic, 1,000 million meters or cubic meters, or BTUs rather, 10,000 million BTUs. It went from $7 for that unit in measurement to 13, so it doubled. So if you just look at that one year, you might say that, you know, council made bad decisions, but then again, that's hard to plan for, you know, 300% increase. And you could also say, well, maybe these were coal-fired plants that we were buying our electricity from. But I think everything I read says that, you know, whatever the price, whatever the fuel, it follows whatever's the, you know, the leader in that price, right? I mean, so I don't see having, in 2008, having made a decision to create a board as was a, you know, a decision that was based on facts because it was one year of bad data. As David pointed out, we've had the electric utility for 100 years and councils managed it effectively. And water and wastewater, how long have we had that? 150 years perhaps?
No, they started with water in about 1935, or excuse me, yeah, water in about 1935 and wastewater in 1950.
Okay, so another 50 to 75 years of good management. And we've had, you know, one spate of bad governance. But I don't think that necessitates taking that decision-making authority away from the city council. I just, I don't see how that is, you know, I don't see anything that's warranted by what happened with, you know, people making bad decisions at the polls and electing people who are not strong enough, not strong enough to raise rates when they should have.
Actually, I want to ask David a question real quick. You said that there was a recommendation to raise the electric rates 20% in 2002, and that was instituted?
In that time, oh, no, 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 we, no, it was not. Because the, the impact, you know, from year to year would have been fairly significant. So it was, you know, determined to spread it and understanding that, understanding that by spreading it out, you were under funding, if you will, the recommendation for the increase. But again, looking at it, you know, whether the board looks at it as a business or council looks at it as a business, we're competing, right? With KCPN, we're competing with Water 7 and so on, when you look at all those things. So in a competitive environment, that would have put us at a competitive disadvantage with neighboring utilities from a standpoint of affordability. Still, we were higher, we knew we were higher. Part of the reason we were higher is KCPN was able to impact wholesale costs where they couldn't to the consumer, to the residential world. So their wholesale, they ratcheted up their wholesale price. And recently, Bill, I don't know, when did KCPN finally raise their residential? It's been a year or two now that they ratcheted up their residential and they're going for... I know they're going for some...
I think it's been a year, but aren't they asking for more?
They're asking for more, and I can't remember if it's Kansas or Missouri. But in any event, they are, their costs, obviously, production or no one, regardless of whether it's coal is going up too. So we're getting closer to parity from a consumer perspective with KCPN. As part of that, you know, you touched on it, when we looked at KCPN, that was the decision back then was, you know, we've got to find other suppliers because, you know, this is not a sustainable model. And that's when we went out and got the GRDA. And then, you know, the Omaha project was a long time coming. It's a good deal, we just didn't have any way to get it down here. You couldn't put in a truck and drive it down. And so there was a lot of, a lot of things going on regarding that.
Well, let me rephrase my question. If we didn't raise rates 20%, did we raise rates at all?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we started raising rates. And part of that, and I wish I could remember exactly the rationale behind eliminating PCA, it may have been the variability associated with the PCA because we had that forever. And that was taken off. And it may have been to establish, again, to establish more parity with KCPN. But does KCPN have a PCA?
Every utility has a, they call it something different to mayor. They call it fuel adjusted factor or something like that.
Right, but it's the same, it's the same thing. It's a variable component based on the cost of power.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
I guess this really speaks to some of my points. You know, we do a rate study and they suggest rate increases. And nobody likes rate increases. They're politically unpopular, it's hard on the consumer, it's hard on our residents. But, you know, Larry and Christie and, did Brian go to the fiscal fitness? The KMEA did in Ottawa. And they've got a financial model that shows you...